Good evening.
Right, yeah, I'll agree.
And welcome to our regular meeting for February. Mrs. Whittup is still in the back, so I'll call it Mr. Demilio.
Here.
Mr. Oliva?
Here.
Mr. McCluskey?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Holmes is in the back. Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
And there's Mr. — and Mr. McGarry will be late. He had to pick up his wife at the airport. His win. I'd like to everyone to please rise for the opening prayer. Tonight's benediction will be offered by Father Jim Cardozzi from St. Dennis.
Good evening, it's good to be with you. I invite you to join me in prayer. Dear heavenly fathers, we gather to do our work, unite our efforts for the common good in order that our community may be a place of peace and justice for all. We submit to your unfailing care all first responders, police officers, firefighters, public workers, and those who work so diligently for the less fortunate. We pray also for our teachers and school administrators, that they may have the skill and wisdom to mold our young people in their formative years to be good citizens. We pray for all elected officials, especially those present here tonight, entrusted with the leadership of the citizens of Havertown and Havreford Township, that they may do so with a spirit of justice and compassion. Grant us insight and key understanding in all our deliberations and decisions. Create among us loving concern and fraternal charity, that we may seek what is best for our community. We ask this in all humility, in his name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Father. First order of business is the appointments. Are there any nominations for the Cable TV Advisory Board? There being none, we'll push that to next month. Vacancy Committee, one-year term. Push that to next month as well. Senior Citizen Advisory Board, Boards One, Two, and Five.
I'm having a meeting at the end of February, so I'm going to ask my residents.
Yes, Mr. President. Nominate Steve Cohen.
Steve Cohen.
And also, I have an EAC appointee appointment, but for some reasons, not on here. Can I do that now?
Sure, go ahead.
It's Victor Barsky.
Okay, Mr. Barsky and Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Good. Is there Township Auditor here?
Yes, sir.
Township Auditor update.
Okay. I've reviewed the disbursements and finances and warrants for this meeting, I've been for January, and everything, my questions were satisfactory, were satisfactorily answered, and there are no, there are no irregularities. I also audited the Super Bowl 52, and I found that there were no irregularities, and the Eagles win, but those Patriots are frauds.
Thank you. Thank you. Any Commissioner or Committee updates? There being none, the Citizens Forum has 20 minutes of registered speakers. We have three registered speakers. Dr. Levin, I do not see him in the audience. Irene Coffey? Come on up, Irene.
Can I just comment that I actually am just agendaing.
No, you can speak on whatever you want on — yeah.
Okay. I'm going to have some copies here of what I'm saying. Irene Coffey, 1437 Maryland Avenue. I'm in the first ward, and I'm the president of the Havreford Township Historical Society. I'm here tonight to ask you to approve Resolution Number 2079, 2018, and to revise and approve Resolution Number 2080, 2018. Resolution Number 2079, authorizing the Historical Society to administer to the needs and upkeep of Nider Hall, is essential to informing granting agencies that the society has the right to apply for a grant. Hope that the commissioners will vote in favor of that resolution. For the last 25 years, the Havreford Township Historical Society has been working steadily to preserve Nider Hall and to restore it to its original appearance. We're continuing our efforts in 2018. This year, the Historical Society is covering the $10,000 cost to renovate the office space and one of the lavatories. Last December, the Board of Commissioners voted to permit the use of $100,000 for additional 2018 projects, using proceeds from the sale of the Eagle Road property, which were designated for the use of the Historical Society. These projects include installing a handicapped accessible lavatory, upgrading the smoke detector and alarm systems, and putting in emergency lighting. The resolutions you will be voting on tonight relate to the work we hope to accomplish in 2019. The projects are listed in the full draft of Resolution Number 2080. The estimated cost of all these projects is $130,000. To help defray the cost, the Historical Society would like to apply to the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission for a Keystone Historic Preservation Construction Grant. A Keystone Grant requires both an endorsement by the township, Nider Hall's owner, and a 50/50 match. Our chances are significantly improved if we can assure the reviewers that our $65,000 match amount is already secured, and that the township as the owner, and the Historical Society as the applicant, are both contributing financially to the match. It's important to demonstrate that all stakeholders have a buy-in. If the grant is awarded, the cost will be reduced by almost $65,000. Resolution Number 2080 states that the entire $64,816 will come from the sale of the Eagle Road property. To strengthen our case, we are proposing that the township and the Historical Society each pledge $32,408, or 25 percent of the total. Together, we will have the required 50 percent match of $64,816. In the interest of full disclosure, let me add that the federal school needs approximately $20,000 worth of routine maintenance. That can't be covered by a Keystone grant, but perhaps by a CDBG or some other grant. We'll have to deal with that later. The township has indicated a willingness to assist with the work needed at Nider Hall and the other buildings administered by the Historical Society. The 2018 projects are being paid for entirely out of either the Historical Society's or the Eagle Road accounts. For 2019, we are asking the township to contribute directly to the Keystone match. The Eagle Road funds would constitute the Historical Society's contribution. If we're successful in getting this grant, then going forward, we will have an additional $65,000 to put into the buildings administered by the Historical Society. Thank you, but I would like to ask a question relating to Resolution Number 2079. The resolution originally read, 25-plus years ago, that it authorizes the continued administration of the Nider Hall facility, which included both Nider Hall and Lawrence Cabin, for an additional 25 years. The current resolution before you reads, "To authorize the Havreford Township Historical Society to continue to administer to the needs and upkeep of Nider Hall for an additional 25 years." And my question is, does the new wording put more legal or financial responsibility on the Havreford Township Historical Society? That's it. Thank you all.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Coffey. Our last registered speaker is Ms. Jean Lutz.
I'm Jean Lutz, I live at 169 Clemson Road. This is Evelyn DePatri, my helper, she lives with me. I'm here tonight to thank you, as a parent, as a taxpayer, and as a member of the Havertown Area Community Action Network, for making sure that our township is keeping its climate promise. As we enjoy the frosty sports of the Winter Olympics, we are also forced to reckon with the news that ski slopes around the world are shutting down due to lack of snow, and scientists assure us that this is not because of natural weather fluctuations, but rather to human activity, namely our production of greenhouse gases. There will certainly be fewer cities cold enough to host the Winter Olympics in the future, but this is a minor problem when we consider all the other negative impacts of climate change on water, agriculture, transportation, human health, wildlife, vital ecosystems. We can't stop climate change, but by reducing our carbon emissions, we can minimize some of its worst effects. And I know you know this already, and I'm here today to thank you for responding to this urgent threat. Since last June, you have switched the township's electricity contracts, so that energy now comes entirely from nuclear power, instead of coal, natural gas, or other fossil fuels. This single act reduced municipal CO2 emissions by 2,000 metric tons per year, the equivalent of taking 425 gasoline cars off the road. I'm told the EAC is going to be presenting a brief update in your March 5 meeting to describe this achievement in more detail. You've also accelerated the plan to replace all the streetlights with LEDs. You've begun to discuss a shift to 100 percent renewable energy sources when the township's electricity contract expires in 2020. You considered the purchase of hybrid vehicles for township use, and you passed a climate change resolution that stressed the urgency of this problem, and called upon state and federal governments to take action. To thank you for these and other actions to fight climate change, HCAN created the Green Valentine Project. Evelyn, you can start to pass out the Valentines now. These packets, you can leave it right there and just take them one at a time. Number there in order, yep. Take your time. Mr. Hart, the children were very inspired by his name, so just a second.
Thank you very much.
The packets contain handmade Valentines created by both children and adults, especially for each one of you. You'll notice that many of the Valentines are made from recycled materials, so don't be surprised to find some cut-up wildlife calendars and repurposed paper bags in your packet. The Green Valentine Project was supported by Cub Scout PAC 500, Brownie Troop 51092, Brownie Troop 51093, Daisy Troop 5549, and the Chestnut World Roots and Shoots Club, as well as many other parents and children. As a larger sign of how much Havreford cares about the environment, we also want to present you today with a collaborative community art project our children made, with some help from adults, out of used plastic bottles. So, shall we? It's for us? Yeah. I don't have a drum roll or anything, so. This heart is a sign of both hope and love for the earth, a sign of how much Havreford cares. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jean, thank you very much. Young lady, thank you for the presence, and thank you for our heart. We're thrilled and honored to be recognized. It's nice to be told thank you once in a while, so it's a compliment to the board. I think we're trying to do the right thing under the financial constraints that we have, and we're happy to do so in a bipartisan way, and thank you for your recognition of our efforts, and we hope to continue our efforts, so that when she's old enough to get up and speak, that we're even in better position, so thank you. Also, at this point, we go to the open forum, so if there any, is there anyone that would like to speak on any topic that's on the agenda this evening in the audience? Anybody raise their hand? Awesome. There's nobody that wants to speak, that's great. Irene, thank you for your comments. I'll get an opinion. I think the wording is just, it was just kind of a legal cleanup, to make it a little bit clearer. Kelly, do you want to address that, or?
It is my understanding that the township is the owner of Nider Hall, and also insures it, so no, I don't believe that the word, the slight change in the wording adds any additional legal or financial responsibility to the Historical Society.
So, we still have to fix the pipes and everything, so, no problem. Great. Next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the reorganization meeting minutes of January 2, 2018, and the regular meeting minutes of January 8, 2018.
I think there were some mistakes in the minutes.
Second.
You have to second.
Second, okay, Mr. Oliva, second, go ahead. Mr. Hart?
They left out Commissioner Holmes' election to, as vice president, which I'm sure, I can't believe he overlooked that, and they also overlooked, Mark Pennington was elected to the Shade Tree Commission, and it wasn't noted.
Mr. Demilio, Mr. Oliva, will you accept those additions to the meeting, those corrections?
Absolutely.
Great. The motion is made and seconded with those corrections from Commissioner Hart. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Mr. Demilio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarry?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 7 is the approval of warrants. Mr. Holmes?
Yeah, I'm sorry, can we go back to minutes for a second?
It's already approved. What do you want to go back to?
It's already approved.
Well, only because there's more missing than that. It jumps, it goes right into one of the solicitor positions. So, I think between.
I mean, the meetings, the minutes that I reviewed were complete. I think the document that is in the email is probably missing a page or two.
Is that the issue?
I believe so.
Well, it might be missing two pages.
Yeah, it's missing a couple pages, if you.
Do you have a copy of the minutes, anybody?
I didn't print them all out, because they're on a computer, but I can get them to you.
All right, and it just, it may be that there's just simply a page missing. All right, sorry about that. Mr. President, I'll move on to our approval of warrants. I move we approve warrant number two of 2018, totaling $3,994,863.10, comprising the general sewer fund payroll for December 31, 2017, in the amount of $17,168.99. General and sewer fund payroll for January 11 of 2018, in the amount of $902,215.72. General and sewer fund payroll for January 25 of 2018, in the amount of $786,751.57. General Fund Disbursements, number two of 2018, in the amount of $1,498,052.21. Sewer Fund Disbursement, number two of 2018, in the amount of $108,728.79. Community Development Block Grant Fund Disbursement, number two of 2018, in the amount of $112,328.34. Capital Project Fund Disbursement, number two of 2018, in the amount of $559,744.10. And a credit card statement ending January 27 of 2018, in the amount of $2,278,000. What's going on here?
That's definitely a typo. Thank God our Director of Finance is here.
Yeah. Either Mr. Anderson or Ms. Cuthbertson, could somebody identify for me when the actual credit card.
Mr. Gentili is in Aruba, so.
Ending in January 27. Yeah, he may be there with 47 of his closest friends, that number.
I think he bought the hotel for that amount.
Before I finish my motion, does either Mr. Anderson or Ms. Cuthbertson, Ms. Cuthbertson have?
I'm scrolling through the document right now.
Maybe, it's at the back of ours, isn't it?
Yeah.
I do believe that the balance is $9,873.38.
That is correct.
Could you repeat that? 9,873. Thank you.
That'll get 2 million on there. Wait. That's correct. It was just a, you know, they got, they got crossed up there. About 2.2 million off, that's all.
Wow. You look at the difference.
Just off by a factor of 1,000.
Yeah, it's not like it's off by two decimals or three decimals.
It's off by a 2 million.
It's off by some.
So, anyway, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? I think even with the typo, we're all scrolling through the credit card bill right now.
That's 2 million.
Mary, Mr. Oliva.
So, moved and seconded. Despite this little typographical error on our agenda, I believe that these warrants, as well as all the township expenses in the last month, have been reviewed by Mr. Anderson. Any questions that have been raised by him have been answered to his satisfaction, and it is my recommendation that we approve these warrants.
Any other questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. Demilio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarry?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Next item is Ordinance P-3, 2018, traffic.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of Ordinance Number P-3, 2018, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways, special purpose parking zone on Tenbee Road at Lansdowne Road Northeast Corner.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions? This is the second reading. Please call the roll.
Mr. Demilio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarry?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 9.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lewis.
Motion to adopt the second reading, Ordinance Number P-4, 2018, amending and supplementing Chapter 4 of the general laws of the township of Havreford regarding the membership of advisory board and commissions and administrative boards and commissions.
Second.
Health Advisory Board, seven to nine members, Ice Rink Advisory, seven to nine members, Parks and Rec, seven to nine members, and Shade Tree Commission, five to seven members.
Second.
Now, it's seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, just real quick, when, Mr. President, when will be the first meeting? We can vote on this in March, or is it the season?
I believe we'll have to advertise for those two positions, and then we'll interview if the people haven't been interviewed already. I'm hoping that, one of the reasons that we're increasing these is because we had so many good candidates, that I'm pretty sure we've probably interviewed 90 percent of the people that we could appoint to fulfill these extra two positions in most of these boards. I'd also like to mention, we talked about the Grange earlier, and I've talked to, the board there is going to let us know what they want to do. I think they, they're in a con, I'm still trying to figure out why we appointed Friends of the Grange, because they have a board that could appoint that too, so we're looking at that, and then also, we would only, after we sit with the president of the Grange and find out what they want, if we have to appoint, then we would just change it from one-year appointments to three-year appointments. And so, the three people we do that, we'd go back and get a resolution to change those to three. So, but that's not involved in this this evening at all, but that's where we are, just for, if you could pass that to Mrs. McGarry down at the Grange. Thank you. Thank you.
When do you think we would advertise, Lori, for this, you know?
I don't see why we wouldn't be able to do it within the next week.
Yeah, it'll be tomorrow, I guess.
Yeah, as soon as we can get up on the webpage, I guess, as soon as IT can get it up there.
Nice to shoot for March for some of the, some appointments.
Right, well, hopefully we'll do that the next meeting, the next voting meeting.
So, we can do, like, the end, the end date for the advertisement to be by the end of this month, so that way, we have the full listing for our first March.
Yeah, and then we can discuss it at the work session, and if we need to interview, we can bring them in after the work session or before, depending on what the schedules are of everybody.
They don't have to re-interview the people who interviewed.
No, if they've already interviewed, and the commissioners are satisfied that we've interviewed them, that's fine.
Okay.
All right. Please call the roll.
Mr. Demilio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarry?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 10, Ordinance P-5, 2018.
Mr. President, motion to adopt the first reading of Ordinance Number P-5, 2018, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highway, special purpose parking in front of 178 Juniper Road.
Second. Second by Mr. McGarry. I assume that's a handicap parking spot. Okay, any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Demilio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarry?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 11.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution 2074, 2018, the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Havreford is authorized by the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to charge appropriate costs for certain public services.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions, details of any of the changes in the fee schedule, I think, are in your notes. Significant one was the addition of the fees for our new chicken ordinance, was one, and I think some professional service fees may have changed by a percentage or two.
Well, it's very straightforward. I believe the only change, other than the addition of the chicken coop fees, is the increase of a civil service entry-level applicant from $35 to $45. And otherwise, all of our fees, and also, we have added new fees, the professional assistance, special events, township medic with the township ALS vehicle is $110 per hour for a township vehicle, and if it's a Narberth EMS with Narberth ambulance, then it is at whatever Narberth's published rates are at the time.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. Demilio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarry?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
No.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 12, Resolution 2077.
Mr. Township, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Hey, Mr. Township! It's Mr. Township!
Actually, I'm just going to leave now. I got a $2 million credit card bill I got to go home and deal with. It's just not been my day.
A little rough timing.
Was that it? That was your credit card bill that showed up, but not of the township's?
It was, yeah, yeah.
Was that Eagles?
I have found, yeah, was that pen?
I think the auditor's got more work to do here.
No, I'm, I'm going to try this again. Mr. President, Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution 2077 of 2018, of the Board of Commissioners of Havreford Township, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, in accordance with the Municipal Records Manual cited in the resolution, hereby authorizes the disposition of public records.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Actually, I would ask our Assistant Township Manager, Acting Township Manager this evening, just to give me a quick description of this.
They're primarily financial records. Amy has put together this disposition resolution, the disposal of the documents would be by shredding the documents, and it is consistent with the records retention laws. And the list is on the resolution. It includes accounts payable lists from 2010, some audit work papers from 2014, payroll-related records or canceled checks that have been on file for over seven years, and I believe there's some real estate tax collection documents, 2015 and prior years, some sewer bill.
I have it in front of me, do you want me to just real fast? I mean, the categories are accounts payable, accounts receivable, budget and banking-related, and they are all as old as you've described, with the exception of 2016 and prior for the paper copies of our warrants, but they're now all retained electronically, so we're just getting rid of extra paper. Payroll-related, real estate tax collection-related records, sewer billing-related records, business tax settlement agreements records, liquid fuels records, annual audit and financial reports, including reports of elected and appointed officials, survey of financial condition and tax information submitted to the Department of Community and Economic Development, and municipal lien-satisfied files.
You just answer your own question. That's pretty good.
Well, I wasn't able Well, I wasn't able to find it. So, while Ms. Whittup was struggling with her memory, I tracked it down on page 155 of my...
She was actually reading it there. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. DiMillo.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item 13.
Mr. President.
Mr. Siegel.
Motion to adopt Resolution 27, 2078, 2018, authorizing the township manager to enter into a CMAC agreement for Route 3, the Traffic Adaptive System with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania penned up.
Second. Made in second? This is a continuation of what we've done further down? Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. DiMillo.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item 14.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2079-2018, to authorize the Havreford Township Historical Society to continue to administer to the needs and upkeep of Nider Hall for an additional 25 years.
Second.
Motion made in second.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
I missed a lot of what was going on between Mrs. Coffey with her statements and all. And do you agree with what Mrs. Coffey was talking about, about using the money out of the Eagle Road fund?
Two different things.
Well, that's a different resolution.
That's the next one coming up.
Oh, okay.
This is just to continue to give them the ability to administer and care for the Nider Hall property for an additional 25 years.
And then I'll ask the next question for the next one, okay?
Okay. Please call the roll.
Mr. DiMillo.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item 15.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt Resolution 2080-2018, to support the Havreford Township Historical Society grant application to the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission for a 50-50 matching grant from their Keystone Historic Preservation Grant Program for work to be completed at Nider Hall, for the total cost of the project to be $129,632, of which the Board of Commissioners will provide a 50-50 match, up to the total amount of $64,816 from the sale of the Eagle Road property.
Second.
Made in second?
Okay. Now that question's...
I believe that the sale of the Eagle Road property was intended to help fund capital improvements to the other historic resources in the township. We petitioned the courts accordingly and have set aside the funds. So, I think it's appropriate that the money for the match come from the proceeds of the sale of the Eagle Road property.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
One thing the Historical Society has asked us to do in this circumstance is of the $64,000 that would be committed on behalf of the township and the society, they are asking us, as the township, only to dedicate $32,000 of the Eagle Road property money, and to take the other 32,000 and commit to it out of our capital budget or out of our 2019 budget that we adopted in December to make this, to match this grant application. We had significant discussion back in December about the use of 100% of the proceeds in 2018 for the 100 or so thousand that we spent on the previous work that's already been authorized. And a number of us on this board discussed whether we wanted to go through every bit of the proceeds from the sale of the Eagle Road property, or whether we wanted to start, you know, using some of that money and otherwise using other township funds. We have, we own these properties and have long-term capital obligations to sustain this property. I support the request of the Historical Society for us to commit to fund half of the half that we are committing to in this, half of the half that we're committing to in this grant application, to be funds that we raise either through our 2019 budget or earmark from other capital funds, and not take all $64,000 out of the proceeds of the Eagle, of the Eagle Road property.
So, can we add a line to that resolution to say that half of that money will come, half of the $64,816 will come from the township, and half of it will come from the money funded for the, can we add that to the resolution? Is that what we want to do?
Yeah, the best language to use would be to say that half, $32,000, will come from the Eagle Road proceeds, and the other half will come otherwise from the township, I think.
From the 2019 budget.
Mrs. Coffey's statement says that the Historical Society was going to provide 30, the other quarter, 25%. To strengthen our case, we're proposing that the township and the Historical Society each pledge $32,408, or 25% of the total. Together, we will have the required 50% match of 64,000.
Yeah, the Historical Society's $32,000 is the Eagle Road proceeds. And they're asking that the other $32,000 come otherwise from the Havreford Township, but not strictly out of the Eagle Road proceeds. If we use the Eagle Road proceeds, all $64,000, and we've already spent 100, and I believe there was reference to another 20 being spent on something else, we will, at that stage, spend about 90%, maybe about 80% of all the proceeds that are from Eagle Road. And while I ultimately supported, a number of us all supported the notion of using, of using strictly the Eagle Road proceeds when we went through the 2018 budgeting process, a number of us recognized that in the end, the township's gonna have to take on this obligation. And I'd rather not see us wipe out those Eagle Road proceeds immediately in one or two or three years, and sustain those while we begin recognizing and therefore making the expenditures necessary to recognize our obligation to maintain these, maintain these facilities. So, that is, that is the request. That is the, that is the additional request that the society is making with regard to this resolution, is not just that we agree that half of it is gonna, is, we're gonna come up with half of the other $64,000 as the grant application, but of that half that the township is coming up with.
I understand.
That we only take 32 out of that.
I'd like to get the township's take on it, though. I hate to put Ms. Coffey on the spot, but I mean, Larry's not here to defend his budget.
Yeah.
And we're taking it out of money he's already appropriated. And it kind of makes, you know, we use that money first, and then we're gonna spend budget money to do the follow-on repairs anyway, so.
Well, I think this adds to the 2019 budget, so.
This is for right now.
This is for right now. These are immediate repairs.
No, but we just said to change.
No, 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 no.
No, this is a grant request.
This is a grant request. This won't be spent until 19.
We just made the recommendation to reflect that it's gonna be in the 2019 budget, too.
Amy, can you, want to go up and say when and where this is gonna go? Because...
I did understand the request in the same way that this was really an impact on the 2019 budget, so, which we obviously haven't even begun that process. I would think that that relatively small amount in the capital world, we should be able to secure those funds, if that's the will of the board and the township manager.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Could you accept that change to your motion?
Well, I mean, I just, my only concern is that, I mean, this was the same discussion we had regarding the 2018 budget, that we're, you know, there's proceeds that were designed to be used for these types of improvements. I think that's what Larry Gentili had expressed during the budget process, was that, you know, these were proceeds that were willed, essentially, for these types of processes. I don't know why, you know, the township is responsible for these buildings. The township would be responsible for these buildings in two years. I understand sort of the theory, but if we're all supportive of it, I don't understand why we would not use, you know, however much is left until that's done, until we start pulling from capital funds. If we're all in agreement that eventually we're gonna pull from capital funds, I mean, I just, it doesn't make logical sense to me. I understand sort of putting it out there, it appears nice, but logically, we have this money in the bank account to be spent for that purpose, I, you know.
Well, we have this money in the bank account specifically for the purpose of supporting the Historical Society and all of the work that it needs to do. And we took a, almost 50% of it and used it instead of putting anything in our 2018 budget. The idea of wiping that out before the township starts kicking in does, as far as I'm concerned, it removes any potential buffer for us in a year where we have an unseen catastrophe, and it's not the year where we can come up with $25,000 of badly needed expenses for one of these buildings. So, if we take out all 64 now, we already did 100, there's 20 more thousand that needs to be done, then sooner than we imagine, that amount's gonna be zero, and they're gonna be subject to the same, you know, they're gonna be subject to the same stresses that we're, that all of our other departments are subject to when we're trying to come up with a new budget. And one of the goals of having that money was to keep those folks from having zero. And so, we did most of it. I mean, we took over half the money, or almost half the money in 2018, but a number of us talked about that we're recognizing the obligation to start committing more township proceeds to the protection of these properties and the maintenance.
Right. But portions of that 100, right, was to go to, because in the years before this will even happened and before the court gave approval, the Historical Commission, the Historical Society came to us and said, you know, these repairs need to be done now, and we did the repairs. So, it was sort of, it's not like the township didn't take care of those emergencies in the past. I just think this is a transition from what I, and part of it is like what Lori said and what somebody said, that Larry's not here to sort of talk about the process. But this is, this is a contradictory thing to what we talked about two months ago with the budget.
Well, no, this isn't contradictory at all to what we talked about. What we said in 2018 was we were not gonna add anything to the 2018 budget to do it. And then a number of us on this board recognized that going forward...
You know, listen, I didn't say contrary to the budget. I said contrary to the rationale we had two months ago.
Well, but the rationale was the 2018 budget. It wasn't, we will spend every single cent of this money and then start adding to it. But I mean, I don't, I mean, we can, we can go to the tape. It's just gonna be a question of what our, of what we want our philosophy to be. Is it to wipe out every penny that these folks got as the sale of that property and then just go to the township capital? Or do we want to keep what amounts to a rainy day, or a fire, or a hole in the roof kind of fund that these people have that won't require township approval and two months of budgetary discussions for them to be able to do it? This is the first step. And we don't do this, then there's gonna be $164,000 gone from that fund, and sooner than we imagine, it's all gone. And they're gonna be in exactly the position they were before we sold that property on Eagle Road. So, I mean, I'm just one person, but it's my recommendation that we, that in this circumstance for $32,000 in the 2019 budget, that we take them up on their request to only use half of the existing funds from Eagle Road, and that we commit township funds for the other half.
I...
No.
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 Sorry. I agree 100%. I think that it's, we keep money in the, in there as a rainy day fund and, you know.
One of the things, I mean, I could go, I could go either way on this. I think the more important thing is that we look more proactively going forward in terms of the needs of our historical assets.
I totally agree.
And that we budget every year X amount of dollars for these projects in 2019 and 20 and 21 and so forth. So, because right now, we're not doing that, and I think we're not supporting, properly supporting and maintaining our historical assets, so.
I agree. I don't think it's been on the realm, I'll speak before Dan, having been on the Property Committee the last couple of years, these buildings weren't discussed and planned for. I agree, we did a poor job years past, planning and budgeting for the stadium improvements over the course of 10 years each time. Just like we're probably gonna have to replace the turf field at the Corrick, we should be budgeting that over the next 10 years for the life of the field, so that, actually, those 10 years are coming up, so it's probably gonna be replaced in less than that. But, but the same with these buildings. It's kind of a, we're kind of nitpicking. I mean, it's not like that fund's gonna be, sit there and the Historical Society can go out and spend it. Anything over $10,000, it's in township coffers, we have to vote on anyway. They can't just take the fund. So, I don't see what the difference, we're just kind of nitpicking.
Let's just be very clear, they can't spend a penny of that.
Right.
That is township money.
So, I mean, it really, it's township money, whether it's in account 30567 or 305, it's still on the township. So, I mean, it really doesn't matter which money we use first, we're still gonna account for it in different ways. So, it's, but we have that money. We may as well use it rather than seep it to taxpayers with the additional burden, since it's, it was given to us for these purposes. So, that's my opinion. Mr. Siegel?
Yeah.
Sorry.
My recollection and what I perceive is exactly what Commissioner Lewis was just saying, that, and also Commissioner Wexler, we hadn't in the past really accounted for the needs of the Historical Society and the historic resources that they maintain. Whatever we do, because to me, this is just, whether you call it one account or the other, it's the same money. It's taxpayer money. It's already in the coffers, one way or another, wherever we spend it from, whichever account. But the key is to include the Historical Society and those buildings in future planning. You know, over the last few years, we have really improved the planning process for our resources, so we don't get hit with those, you know, as many emergent bills as we, as historically we've had, and we've done a good job. And, you know, Mr. Denny just walked in, and he's, you know, apropos what Mr. Wexler just said, you know, he has, he proposed a plan to deal with things like the turf field over time. And that's what we need to do to avoid this, oh, my God, the roof is falling. And that, to me, is far more important than a $34,000 expenditure, whichever account it comes from. We've got to plan for those resources. Those are the history of this township.
I totally concur.
Yeah. I also, I agree with what everybody has said. The fact, the only question is whether that money should remain in the fund, those $32,000 should remain in that fund. In case they need something right away, then that money would be there for them. They wouldn't have to wait for the following budget year to do certain things. It's taken what, you know, it's taken out of the taxpayers' pockets one way or another, so, but I believe that I'd rather have that money there for the Historical Society if it was necessary, rather than have to wait a year for it to be added to the budget.
They've waited 20 years for this money now.
I, you know, again...
We have, we need $130,000 of immediate repairs for humidifiers and improvements to the kitchen and everything, and we have that money. We're pledging half of it, so it's of the grant. So, it's, I mean, there's a need now for that money. I mean, there's, I don't know what the future needs. If there's an emergency repair to a township building, we have contingency.
Well, I do know what the future needs. The future needs of those, these are, these are really emergent. But I mean, they have a budget of a million dollars of things that could be done to these buildings and still not do everything that needs to be done for these buildings. If you haven't, if you haven't seen the conditions under which these folks are heroically trying to preserve extraordinary township assets that nobody else is going to take care of, no one else is trying to archive, no one else is trying to preserve these things, I, we are going, if I just take a long view of this, five years from now, the township's gonna have to send, spend a certain amount of money to preserve these buildings, to upgrade these buildings, and to preserve these assets. What do I do in the meanwhile? I don't think we should empty that account, because we've already taken almost half of it. This will take three quarters of it. And I think that's a mistake. I think it's a mistake when these folks were willed this property, and the goal of that, of that gift to that society was to help them do their job. And I don't think we help them do their job if we drain that before we give them any other township money. I think we're putting off our obligation. So, it's my recommendation, and they're not asking for all 64. They're just, they're asking for 32. They already lost their request in 2018 to get shared money on that thing. Now, they're only asking for half, for one quarter of this project to be a township commitment. I think it's a, I think it sends the right message. I think it also reflects the first step of what sounds to me like most of us on this board who think it's an obligation that it's time we undertook. I say, let's take it tonight and not take it in December, and not take it next March. I say, let's take it tonight and not take it in December and not take it next March.
I wish this argument had been made when we did the long-range plan and the planning for the Township Maintenance Facility, the Police Department, the Administration Building, so that we could have it in our priorities and we know what our steps are. I think, I think that's what Commissioner Lewis is trying to do, is we get those, we get, use the formal process instead of stepping outside it just because we had a will of 100 and whatever the number was, what we got from the sale. To do that, we need to do it the right way to do it. We have the money. If, if they have a catastrophic, if they had a fire, we have insurance on the building. So, I mean, if, if the roof leaks, we have insurance, we can do emergency repairs for the Historical Society. I think this money was put here for that purpose. Let's use it. And then let's get it in the planning cycle, put it on the priorities for building, maintenance, repair, and budgeting as we go forward so that we don't have this argument, $32,000 argument's not needed because we already know that the Federal School needs a $20,000 upgrade in two, over the next 18 months. And let's get that into the Property Committee, get it on the priorities, get it into the budget process so that we now have the planning for it in intelligent, logical fashion, as Mr. Lewis stated.
This is quite intelligent, logical fashion. It has set out for us the details of what they need here. And it is, it is our board taking the first step toward recognizing that need. We don't need to do a lot more analysis. We have a nine-item list of the things that need to be done at Nider Hall as part of this, of part of this grant application. So we have the project, we know the money that's necessary for it. We're already asking for 50% of it from somewhere else. So, I mean, this is just that, this is that first step.
But that's a project that's come from the Historical Society, correct? It hasn't been vetted through the Township Engineer, the Township Staff?
Well, I'm sorry. I'll just read something right here that says, "It is the desire of the Board of Commissioners to continue this mutually beneficial relationship with the Hefert Township Historical Society to continue to administer all the facilities that they administer." I mean, we've, we've, we've charged them with the duty of doing this. But I don't need the Township Engineer or anybody else to, to second, I mean, the Township Engineer does look at this stuff, but I don't need to second guess the project.
No, they, they provide the advice and we, we own the building, that's right.
Be clear. Let's, everybody understands something. We've not adopted a 2019 budget. So nothing we do tonight binds us, other than morally binds us to promise to do this in, in the end of 19. But it is a very good step to the public and it's a very good step to our Historical Society that we put a lot of work on and count on a lot, to say to them, we're taking this seriously and we're taking it seriously now. But we can't spend 2019 money tonight, but we can make that gesture now. We can make that commitment now and say, yeah, of the half that needs to be put up here, we tell you that we're going to budget that in 19 and not wipe out at that point 75% of your rainy day fund, or your fire fund, or your air conditioning gone bad fund, or anything else, or your mudslide, or anything else that can happen to these folks. So that's all. That's what's at issue. And these folks, these aren't strangers to us. These are the folks we just resolved five minutes ago to be the people in charge of administering our facilities. So I, obviously, I feel very strong about it. And I, just one vote, but I think, I think tonight's the night to do this.
Call a question. Mr. McGarry.
I just want to say that I agree with what Larry's saying here. As far as next year's budget, the way we're all talking here tonight, we ought to make sure we live up to our obligation because Nider Hall and the Grange Estate are both terribly underfunded. And there's other places we can take it from. I'm not going to get into that argument now, but we have to look at what we're saying here tonight and, and remember that to keep your word, that we've got to resolve this problem because they can't keep going down and down and down. Fortunately, they got this money from the Eagle Road project, which helped a lot. But if they didn't have that money, what would they have? Nothing. And remember, whether the Grange or whether Nider Hall, 90% of those people, or even 100% in some cases, are volunteers. Over 65, over 75, some over 85. So remember that.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, let's call the roll.
Mr. DiMillo.
Yes.
Wait, I'm sorry. Before you call the roll...
We're promoting the resolution as, as 15.
Mr. Leva asked to amend the resolution, but it's, it's your resolution, Mr. McCloskey, and the resolution is not amended?
That's correct.
Okay.
It is not amended, so the full money would come out.
We all clear?
I think there's a commitment, even though if we...
Oh, I definitely agree.
The commitment is that we're going to look at this on a long-range basis.
We're going to put it on the priorities, but, right.
But not this year.
What?
Just like not last year.
Well, we could. We don't have, we don't have any information from them to know exactly what the needs are from, from the various organizations. So I don't have any, I think we're splitting hairs on this. I mean, I do, I really do. I think it's, we're going to, we're going to be there if they need us, is the bottom line. I know I will, I will support the needs, the emergency needs that come up. So I don't really, I think we're splitting hairs here.
In order to give the Township Manager some flexibility, I'll make, like to, I'll offer this amendment up that, if you read the resolution, to just...
That's just the agenda.
No, but, but it says provide a 50-50 match, the total amount's 60. I'd like to end it at that period and leave off from the sale of the Eagle Road property. Township Manager then has the, he controls the funds wherever it comes from.
That would have to come from our instruction, though.
Well, we're telling him he can spend it. Where he's, he, the Director of Finance can, if we have the money there and it makes sense, he can reallocate, he can reallocate as, as required. If there's a rainy day, he can supplement it back. But he's got some flexibility in moving, moving the funds, I would say. That's, I'm offering that suggestion to give the flexibility. He's not here, the Director of Finance is here, but we have the money. Use it. If we need more money, you know, we're going to, the only place we can get more money is to, is to allocate, budget it, raise taxes to cover it. So as long as we're all aware of that. But we have this money for this grant coming up, so...
It isn't just simply, we need the money we raise taxes. We, you know, at the end of the year, whatever money we need, we come up with whatever means are necessary to get it. If raising taxes is necessary to get it.
Or borrowing.
If our, if we're talking about capital things, we borrow it. If our tax revenue goes up, we don't miss it from, from our business community, we don't necessarily have to raise our property taxes. So, but our Township Manager may not be here right now, but our Township Finance Director just did say, five minutes ago at that microphone, that it wasn't a lot of money and she didn't see a problem with putting in the 2019 budget. So we can ask Mr. Gentili what he thinks, but our Township Finance Director did answer your question.
Right. And that gives them the flexibility to do it the budgeting way.
Yeah. I, look, I support your amendment. It's not my resolution, though.
I'd accept that amendment.
Who seconded it?
Maria.
Maria.
So it ends at the period after the 64,816.
Right.
It actually has a period in the resolution. I accept your amendment.
So the motion is amended to leave out the wording "from the sale of the Eagle Road Please call the roll.
Mr. DiMillo.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item 16. And I did, and Mrs. Coffey, I didn't mean to cut you off, but there's a place that you can speak at the end, so, okay. Item 16. Mr. Holmes.
Yes. Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution 2082 of 2018 approving the 2018 professional consultant fee schedule.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any, any discussion?
This, this has been, provided to us with the approval of our Township Manager and Township Finance Director. I can do some quick math for you. Our, most of our hired professionals, it looks to be a raise of approximately 2% or 3%, with, I guess, the largest increase being of survey crews going from 144 to $200 per hour. I suspect, and the Township Finance Director will correct me if I have that wrong, that that is a market-driven change as opposed to some type of, some type of gift to survey crews. So it is my recommendation that we adopt this, these increased rates. And, and if anybody has any specific questions on them, I invite them to ask our Finance Director.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. DiMillo.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item 17.
Mr. President. See if I can do this without getting any mistakes.
Or Mr. Township, whatever.
I, Mr. Township, I move we adopt Resolution 2085 of 2018, Designating Lawrence J. Gentili Township Manager as the official to execute all documents and agreements between the Township and the Commonwealth Finance Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining a small water and sewer grant in the amount of $64,600 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the rehabilitation of approximately 1,060 feet of sanitary sewer lines within the township.
Second.
Motion made in second.
I do believe this resolution speaks for itself. It is my recommendation that we adopt it.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. DiMillo.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item 18, Mr. DiMillo.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to authorize the purchase of five 2018 Chevrolet Tahoe vehicles from Hanru Chevrolet, 350 South Main Street, Mannheim, PA, under Pennsylvania CoStarz contract 13-003, in the amount of $189,500.
Second. Any questions or comments?
Just real quick, we had talked, and it was brought up earlier, that we talked about looking into hybrid vehicles. And Larry's not here tonight, but...
I can have the chief address it, but I think they did look at police vehicles.
Right. I was just going to say, maybe we, I know there's been some things done in that area and maybe we could update the public at some point in the next...
Sure.
Did you just prepare it right?
Yep.
If we're prepared now, that's good.
Well, I think this will be between the Police Department and Public Works. We've had extensive conversations looking at hybrid vehicles or electric vehicles. As far as the Police Department's concerned, it's sometime in the spring, it's our expectation to buy a hybrid vehicle for our parking authority. So it will start migrating out the old Crown Vics and start with one of those. A hybrid vehicle for an actual patrol vehicle is not feasible at this point because of limitations as far as electrical and all the equipment we carry in it because of the old constant on and off with it, it couldn't carry the load. Now, I know Ford is coming out now with a hybrid vehicle. It's just coming out now, you can order them, but they're not even out in the street yet. So the jury's still out to see exactly what they can do. They, they wouldn't be adaptable to a true patrol vehicle. It's not big enough because we tried one of those and the car was entirely too small. So that's when we bumped up to the Explorer. We found that they didn't hold up. The new SUV Explorers, they didn't hold up to what we expected out of a police vehicle. And we bumped up to the Tahos because we're carrying more and more equipment on a yearly basis where more stuff is coming from the county, from the state that we're required to have in a car for the patrol. Basically, it's their office. All the, all the equipment is right there in front of them. We are exploring that option possibly as, before these cars come in, to possibly go, convert one of the cars to a propane vehicle. Now, I know Public Works, Doc will address that as far as propane. Right now, the Tahos, the engine that Chevy is making, am I correct with this, Doc?
That's correct.
You have more technical knowledge than I do.
The engine that Chevrolet makes right now cannot be converted to propane because of the type of fuel injection it has. So until Chevrolet comes out with a different engine, right now, the Chevrolet Tahoe cannot be converted because of the type of injection it has.
It's our understanding that Chevrolet is looking into that, looking to change that process. So if, in fact, it does occur in the next few months, you know, we'll obviously look into that. Otherwise, it would be our goal, at least next year, to look into propane vehicles if we can make it work.
How many manufacturers are there of police vehicles? Is it really limited to Chevy and Ford?
Chrysler, Ford, and Chevy.
Does Chrysler have any, any options?
Chrysler, Chrysler vehicles are just the sedans. The police departments aren't using their SUVs and I don't believe they come in, in the propane either. I didn't even look at that because we haven't been...
So we really have to wait until Chevy comes out?
We, we have a lot.
We have opportunities, more opportunities than Public Works, it sounds like, than we do immediately in the Police Department.
But we are, we are have, actively looking at it. We did actively look at the hybrid vehicle for police use. It just isn't adaptable at this time for what we carry. But we are going to migrate one in sometime in the spring, like I said, for the parking authority.
Yeah, and the, the hybrid vehicle that they're looking at, or Ford is using is the Fusion and not the Taurus. So it's actually smaller than the police car that the state troopers use for patrol. So it's a, it's a small sedan that they're using. So once they get bigger, then we can start.
I'm sure as time goes on, you know, it's, it'll be more adaptable to what police use. But like anything else, even when the police car started to convert to the, what they are now, it took a few years for them to convert to, you know, what the daily riggers and police patrol require.
But Chief, you did say you are looking at electric and hybrids for the parking enforcement and those...
Definitely. We're not going to do electric. We had talked, Doc, I'll let you address that more.
We had, we had discussed the electric vehicle for the Parking Authority and we think that the hybrid would be more, more, more adaptable to what we need to do.
It will run on the battery with the hybrid and convert to the gas, you know, as needed for battery consumption.
So, Doc, the two, the two that were on the next agenda item, talking about buying a 2018 propane Ford 350 pickup and a 550 dump truck propane, are there opportunities beyond that in terms of trash trucks and things like that? What do you see as opportunities?
We're actually looking at a trash truck, which will probably be on the agenda for next month. And it's a new design that's come out, it's called Packet Idle. Instead of the trash truck pulling up to a stop and having to rev to 1,800 RPM to pack the trash, they actually Packet Idle. It's a, it's a new design. It's, it's built into the transmission and the transfer case of the, of the truck so it can Packet Idle. So that's going to reduce the amount of fuel and carbon footprint because you're not revving the truck to 1,800 RPM in order to pack the trash. It'll be quieter going down the street as it packs trash, it's not going to be as noisy. It's not gonna be as noisy. You're not gonna have the engine revving up and you'll reduce the fuel and wear on the truck, so.
How many trash trucks do we have?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, so this will be the first one.
It'll be the very first one. It's something that's just came out. We went...we've been exploring it for quite a little bit.
And you're comfortable with it?
Actually had a very interesting hour and a half phone conversation with the head of Public Works for the City of New York, who is in charge of all the trash. We had a conference call and right now, that seems to be the hot ticket and they've already been the guinea pig on them.
Oh, good. That's great.
Doc, so is the propane use, I know some of the concern was where we were gonna be able to fill up with the propane.
Not at all. The school district did a pilot program last year with propane. They have a few buses on propane, very successful.
Great.
And the school district where we get our diesel fuel now also has a propane dispenser down there, you know, a filling station. And actually, if we get enough propane vehicles in the future, the filling station comes at no cost. You just have to buy the propane. But just to give you an idea, right now, I had Amy pull up this morning. Gasoline for the month of January was $2.01 a gallon is what we paid. Propane currently is $1.10 a gallon.
Great.
So not only reduce the carbon footprint, it's a reduction in fuel cost and the school district loves it. The maintenance is way down on them. Burns cleaner.
Thanks.
And all the propane vehicles that I have, one of the next coming up would be propane or gas. So if you were to be out plowing situation, we are out 18, 20 hours plowing straight. When the vehicle runs out of propane, it automatically converts back to gasoline. No limitations.
Doc, just real quick, I know the school board's different, but you said they had a pilot program with the school buses?
They did a program where they started buying some propane buses and they actually had a truck come down every day and fill them, a propane truck come and fill them. And now that they have enough buses, they actually have their own filling station. I've talked to George Ramplin, Director of Transportation, and he says absolutely no problem. We can get our propane from them.
So they'll be moving towards more buses, propane?
Moving towards more buses as well. Very successful.
Well, thanks for your work on this. Appreciate it, guys.
Gentlemen, thank you both. Any other questions? Please call the roll on item eighteen.
Mr. DiMillo.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Mr. McGary, Public Works.
Okay, Public Works, motion to authorize the following purchases for the Public Works Department. Number one, the Sewer Department steak body truck with lift gate from Hyundai Ford, Mannheim, Pennsylvania, under CoStarz contract OO25 in the amount of $45,925. Highway Department, 2018 propane Ford F-350 pickup truck with Western Plow from Hyundai Ford, Mannheim, Pennsylvania, under CoStarz contract OO25 in the amount of $40,265. Highway Department, 2018 propane Ford F-550 dump truck with Western Plow and salt spreader from Hyundai Ford, Mannheim, Pennsylvania, under CoStarz contract OO25 in the amount of $75,451. Highway Department, 2018 Ford F-550 Electrician's Bucket Truck with utility body and 40-foot high bucket from Atlee Industries, Plains, Pennsylvania, under CoStarz contract OO25-091 in the amount of $100,472. And there is a deadline on these different items that we could talk to Richard Dougherty about.
Motion made in second. Any questions?
It's Hondrew Ford. Hondrew Ford. Hondrew Ford is the name of the dealership in Mannheim.
Close enough.
Just close, pronunciation.
Hyundai, Hondrew, whatever.
Any other comments?
Hyundai's not close.
I was kidding.
Please call the roll.
Mr. DiMillo.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item eighteen is continuations of the Citizens Forum. This is where anyone in the audience can address the board on any item.
First of all, thank you to the legal counsel for setting my mind at rest that I'm not assuming any additional legal or financial responsibilities. I appreciate that. And secondly, I do appreciate the resolution that you passed for the funding, for the grant that we're applying for. One of the problems with applying for this grant is that they look very closely at the source of the funding for your 50/50 match. And they want to know that the township is willing to support it financially and also that the historical society is willing to support it financially. By dropping off that clause at the end, Mr. Wexler, I think that you've given us the opportunity in our budget narrative to explain that there is a sort of two streams coming into that and that that will work for our purposes. And, Mr. Holmes, thank you very much. I totally support your arguments and I'm very appreciative of them. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mrs. Coffey. Is there any other resident that would like to address the board? Item twenty, new business.
Mr. President.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to add two related items to the agenda. One that would be Resolution 2086, 2018, and the other Ordinance P6, 2018. And if that's approved, then we can discuss it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second to add two resolutions to the agenda?
Resolution and ordinance.
Resolution and one ordinance.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so go ahead and...
Okay, both of these we circulated to the board earlier today and I'll first make a motion to adopt what would be Ordinance P6, 2018, that would amend Chapter 83 fireworks and other weapons under the Township Code. I don't know if I have to read the entire ordinance. I hope not, but since it's not in the agenda...
Just a bold print at the top.
Yeah, so it would be an ordinance amending and supplementing Ordinance Number 1960, adopted June 30, 1986, and known as the General Laws of the Township of Haverford at Chapter 83, firearms, fireworks, and other weapons. Article 5, fireworks consistent with the fireworks law, Pennsylvania Act 43, 2017. Consistent spelled wrong. Second.
Second. Motion made in second.
If I may explain, I think also for the public. In 2017, the Pennsylvania Legislature, as part of its budget bill, made extensive revisions to the fireworks regulations in the state law. The revisions created licensing and other requirements for fireworks dealers, created two classes of fireworks, display fireworks, which would be the large displays that you would see at a holiday or Penn's Landing or at a stadium, those types of things, and additional provisions for what were considered consumer fireworks, which are fireworks sold at retail outlets. The ordinance contains extensive licensing requirements through the Department of Agriculture and other requirements. The ordinance dramatically impacts our ordinance here because it's different from our ordinance, which in the past had prohibited certain types of fireworks. As I read it and in consultation with the solicitor, we agreed that this state law would preempt or would supersede any township regulations. The state law did not address, and part of the purpose this is to address, one, to bring our fireworks ordinance into compliance with the new state law. The second would be to specify in which commercial zones in the township the fireworks could be sold, consumer fireworks. And in this draft ordinance, we limited to what are, I always get this confused, C4 districts, which are the commercial districts primarily along the highways, West Chester Pike, Lancaster Avenue, those areas. And we would have a separate resolution that we would have to amend the zoning code to specify that use as we do for other types of businesses. So that is sort of the genesis of this and we wanted to deal with this before we had potential fireworks dealers just coming into any area within the township that was zoned for it. And I know Ms. Witup did also consult with the police about this as well. So that's the basis for the ordinance.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, yes.
The Section 8320 violations and penalties, not exceeding $600 in cost of pricing, where do the $600 come from? Can we increase that? I mean, I support this. I view this as a very serious safety issue as well and I would like to see that increased.
In looking at this, actually, you're looking at Section 8320 that should be 8321 and 8321 should be 8322. It looks like we misnumbered it. But that is the current, we did not change the stat, that provision because that was in our current ordinance. We amended other areas. We didn't give, I could have provided a red line version, but it would have basically, that's about the only surviving...
Can we increase it? Laurie?
I'll ask. I would defer that to...
I'm sorry. You're looking to increase it to what?
I think it should be $1,000.
I think that the Act talks about people doing things with a fine of $100. And I'm just referring to this Act 43 of 2017 and the penalty provisions there are different. But here, we're talking about maybe things that aren't a violation of the term of the license that the state is issuing from the Department of Agriculture. So I'm gonna say that we would have to look at that and discuss it with the solicitor's office because it's a new law and I don't want to make like an arbitrary guess about this and I don't want to put Kelly on the spot either. But the penalty provision is at 2414 in the Act and it reads, "A person using consumer fireworks in violation of the provision of this article commits a summary offense and upon conviction shall be punished by a fine of not more than $100."
Well, that's nothing. And 600 to me is not enough, so I really believe it should be a thousand. This is a real safety issue. You're talking about, and the police chiefs here, there's also a fire chief. I mean, there's a potential for catastrophe in some of these. Some of these facilities have exploded big time. And I think if somebody's violating and not adhering to the resolutions that we put forth or the state puts forth, it needs to be higher than 600.
Is there a maximum that the law will allow us to impose?
No, as Ms. Witup was just pointing out, under your current provisions, it is 600 under the existing firearms, fireworks, and other weapons that you have. My understanding is that you do have some township ordinances that do have fines of up to $1,000. So if you wanted to entertain that as an amendment to the ordinance, I think that you could. It's separate from the state summary offense, which is limiting it at 100 because of violation of townshipal ordinance is treated separately. So it would be up to the board.
Then I would ask Mr. Siegel to amend it to be $1,000. I'll accept that amendment.
Why don't we make it $10,000?
Because I don't think you can do over $1,000?
No, I think $1,000 is...
But I mean, here's my problem. This law was passed on October 30, 2017. We, one of the things we don't do here is stuff like this at the end of our meetings. There is issues of state law preemption that haven't been worked out yet. I don't know what standards we're gonna set between C4 or C3 or any other, or any of our zoning distinctions that we make. And I think we need answers to those questions before we start just adopting ordinances about fireworks.
Well, our solicitor just gave an opinion on the fine, so...
Our solicitor, when did our solicitor start looking at this? Today?
No.
No, we looked at it last week.
All right, I mean, a week. I mean, this has been, I don't, I didn't get today's copy of anything. It's just it went to my township, but it didn't go to my work email. I don't think there's any reason for us to rush into this tonight and adopt an ordinance that's gonna include $1,000 fines and we've got a $100 thing and until we've also discovered what other townships are doing this. This is statewide. Obviously, townships all over Pennsylvania are dealing with this issue now. I suspect a bunch of the past ordinances.
I applaud Dan for, you know, looking into this and being proactive and we need to do what we need to do to protect our residents. So, I mean, I'm in favor of this today and I just asked if he amended it and he said he would, so. I'm satisfied with the solicitor's opinion on the fine at least.
I've tried numerous times to do things on the fly and they've gotten shot down because we need to analyze them. We need to spend time reading the ordinances, doing these kinds of things. We do not have an emergent situation here. We're talking about, you know, and we're talking about, we can't stop the sale of fireworks and have it for township, we can't do it. So we can't just say, well, let's confine it to one place in one little area.
I'm not gonna answer for Dan, but I don't think that's saying that.
Well, this is an ordinance that's limited to the C4 commercial districts, which is exactly one spot in the township?
No.
Is it the Manoa Shopping Center?
No, that's a shopping center district.
And what is that? I mean, why shouldn't they be able to do one in a shopping center?
That's a question for the board. I've drafted a proposed ordinance.
But it's also a question for the public. It's also gonna be a zoning board thing. It's gonna invite public review. So I just don't believe there's any reason for us to be acting tonight on something this complicated with a great deal of state law, with a brand new state law and state law preemption issues. And I'm curious what a lot of other intelligent boards have done since October 32, 2017, when this fireworks law was changed. I just don't think there's any reason for us to act precipitously tonight.
Okay, and I understand what you're saying. I don't agree with what you're saying. I think that if someone comes along and is looking at a vacant store, then we have a problem because we didn't enact this and that can happen.
Nobody is gonna start selling fireworks in a big vacant store in this town in the next 30 days. It's not gonna happen.
That's not necessarily accurate.
Well, is that how we act? Is there any other stores we know might happen in the next couple of weeks and we wanna pass ordinances tonight that none of us have talked about, none of us have considered, none of us have invited public comment? I mean, fireworks, the fireworks law changed. It changed in Pennsylvania. There may be fireworks stores that want to open in some of our, in any space that it's allowed to do in the township. We should look at this thoughtfully and we should look at this in cooperation with people that are gonna recognize. We're looking at it at 8:35, the night of the meeting, and this was distributed several hours ago. And most of us don't know anything about this. So it's just not necessary to talk about tonight.
It's always interesting because the discussions we've had in the past about what does need to be brought up in new business seem to change based on various whims. And I'm not gonna get into that. I want to get into why this was addressed, why we are addressing it, since it seems at least unclear in one circumstance. First, this is a first reading. There will be a second reading of the ordinance as there is with all of them. Second, when this came onto our radar and it was actually Ms. Witup who sent it to me as Chair of the Ordinance Committee, we looked at it and I looked at it and there, as with any new law, there were issues that were inconsistent. Holes is a perfect word for it in our regulation. Fireworks, as I think we would all acknowledge, are dangerous or can be and as a result, it has public safety issues. And as a result, I took it on myself as Chair of the Ordinance Committee to draft a proposed ordinance, which is what it is, a proposed ordinance. This board can, you know, we can table it, we can vote on it, we can decline, you know, reject it. That's up to the board. But because you have a situation with new types of business that until very recently could not operate within this township, I think it is incumbent upon this board to look at this. As soon as we had discussed it and reviewed it with the solicitor and in advance of Ms. Witup sending out the final draft, I notified every commissioner by email of what we were doing and why I was suggesting that we consider it tonight. And, you know, we've addressed an issue. Frankly, I don't care what any other community has done because our standards here are based on what is needed in this community, not what's needed somewhere else, just as we've passed numerous types of ordinances without regard to that. And what we've done is proposed limiting it to a C4 commercial district. Those are districts that are considered highway districts and they include prop businesses like gas stations, automobile places, wholesale business, veterinary hospitals, dental offices, exterminators, beverage distributors, and other types of similar uses designed to be, you know, on businesses which ordinarily require major arterial locations. Fireworks are the type of product that is likely you're going to get people to come from other locations and would use those. So we felt that was the best option. That's why we'll also have a second, the, excuse me, the resolution for a zoning code amendment. And in that resolution, that has to be reviewed by the county, I believe, as well, so that it will go through an additional review process and regardless of what we say in the ordinance, we still have to have the corresponding zoning change. So that's the genesis of it. That's why I believe that this is not the typical type of ordinance that we should defer until another meeting.
Well, I think this is, I think all of our ordinances we consider at work sessions, personally, I think selling marijuana is as dangerous as selling fireworks. And the marijuana rules that we passed, we passed after a work session and after addressing and publishing an ordinance where we changed our zoning to address where they could or couldn't place a medical marijuana facility. You know, is C4 the right thing? I don't know. C3 might be the right thing. If we had a work session and talked about this and invited comment, I'm not saying we have to do what Lower Merion does, but it is instructive, always instructive, for this board to find out what other townships are doing or have done in response to the changes in law. And so as far as, you know, a number of people on this board... I'm happy to discuss it on the March work session, okay? But passing an ordinance has meaning. It isn't just it's a first ordinance. Even though it's just a first ordinance, we have avoided doing that. And we have avoided just passing first ordinances because we can talk about it at a work session and change it if we want. We pass laws, we pass them a second time, and then they become the law in the township. And we spend, we spend an appropriate amount of time talking about that and investigating and getting help from our solicitor. And I appreciate... And I appreciate, Dan, that you did this today. And I don't, I don't, I don't question your motives here that there's, that you see a concern. I just don't think that this situation calls for action like this, which is highly unusual for the way we now do things. I mean, that, I mean, and you have been one of the chief proponents of us doing things as, you know, by getting ordinances to the ordinance committee, getting them published, having a work session to discuss about them. So I don't see the emergent nature, especially in the fact that this is now three months old. And I'm, I just, I don't think this merits us separating from the practices that we have quite admirably followed for a number of years now, that we don't do much in new business unless the situation really calls for it.
You know, I believe that this board, and correct me, Mr. Chairman, have we not passed resolutions in the past similar to what we're doing this evening? I think we have. And we've, we've asked if we could, we voted on it, and we did it. There's no, there's no problem passing the first reading and then discussing it at the March work session. We could do that, and we can make changes, but...
We do that every time.
Right, and we can talk about it again. But I, you know, the medical marijuana issue, it is an issue, and it was a safety issue. But we had some time. This is something that we just were, when I found out, and Kelly could tell you, I phoned Kelly about this, and I had as much concern as Dan had about that state law.
But we had time. And also, as far as these things being attractive, fireworks stores right now in Pennsylvania get a great deal of traffic because of where they're located. They're located usually within five miles of a border of another state because as long as you go to a friend's house over in New Jersey and bring them back across the border to the first exit on 95, they can buy all the contraband they want with their out-of-state driver's license and then give you it, and then you can blow your hands off at July 4th. But once we put one in Havreford Township, there's going to be another one in Radnor Township, and another one in Marple Township, and another one in Chester County, and 10 more of them in Bucks County.
Yeah, but chances are, if the one in Radnor blows up, it's not going to hurt anyone in Havreford.
Go online and find any Pennsylvania fireworks store that's blown up in the last 20 years. Find one. I mean, I appreciate that, that you're concerned, but it just doesn't happen. These guys fandom didn't blow up on 95.
It may not have happened in Pennsylvania, but it's happened in the United States.
It may have happened in the United States.
It happened recently, I can't remember.
A lot more gas stations.
A lot more people drive out of gas pumps with the gas thing still attached. And we don't outlaw those.
That's exactly right. And we can't, we can't regulate that or control it. But we can do something about this.
But we can, and we can talk about it. And let's have a good, intelligent conversation about it. Let's invite expert opinion on it, and let's get, and let's get clear stuff from our solicitor.
We have a second, and he accepted my...
Hold on, so we're still, you're not going to cut off discussion now? This is our work session.
But we're not going to go back and forth? I mean, either table it or vote on it?
I just have one thing to say.
I don't even, I'm not allowed to discuss it now?
No, I'm not saying that.
Mr. Oliva?
I have strong feelings about not having public discussion. I have brought things in front of this board, and this board has, in the past, issued things that I thought were very important to try to get done. And the board has always, and I agree that the board has, as always, or 99% of the time, has acted in a manner of openness with the public. So to allow public comment, to allow for people to read the ordinance, to look through it, and to come up and to speak about it, I think is very important. You know, and I understand what Commissioner D'Amelio is saying about, you know, the emergent nature of this. But when it comes to being open and having things, I think it's more important that we do have public comment and have people look at this and say, okay, this is, you know, I don't have a problem with it, or whatever. This is before we go ahead and enact some of these, some of these ordinances.
Very good. Anyone else?
More questions?
Please call the roll.
This is with the amendment, right?
This is the resolution to the ordinance?
With the amendment.
Ordinance.
The ordinance is the only thing.
The $1,000 fine amendment.
Not 20?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so that I'm clear, we're voting on P. 6 and not on the resolution?
Correct. We have, I didn't move for the resolution yet.
But is P. 6 as amended with a $1,000 fine?
Correct.
Not exceeding 1,000.
Yes, not exceeding.
And also two very slight minor amendments, 83, the second 8320 is 8321, and 8321 is 8321.
Yeah, they were just misnumbered.
And so in the new 8321, you're changing fine not exceeding 600 to a fine not exceeding 1,000.
Exactly, right.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
No.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
No.
Mr. Holmes?
No.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Mr. Segal?
Yes, I would move for the adoption of resolution number 2086, 2018. And I'll read this in full. Whereas a proposed amendment to the zoning provisions at section 182-405B of the general laws of the township of Havreford, providing for the sale of consumer fireworks in the C4 highway commercial district will be considered at a public hearing before the Board of Commissioners. And wherefore the Board of Commissioners of Havreford Township desires to keep its citizens and business interests informed as to the status of proposed amendments to the township's code, known as the general laws of the township of Havreford, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Havreford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that a public hearing shall be held on Monday, March 12, 2018, at 6:30 p.m. in the Commissioners Meeting Room, Havreford Township Municipal Services Building, 1014 Darby Road, Haverford, Pennsylvania, resolved this 12th day of February, 2018.
Second. Motion made in second. Any questions?
Yeah, I do. What is the C4 district, and why are we using a C4 district and not a C3?
Ms. Whitup?
The C4 district is highway commercial, and C3 is general commercial. Basically, if you put it in C3, it would be permitted in C4 and C5 districts as well because of the way your code reads. It builds on the C3. The C4 is highway commercial. It's the larger roads, Westchester Pike, Lancaster, and Township Line.
So right now, where would those C4 districts be? Where could, where could people put one of these fireworks facilities?
Right now? Stance, I mean, the stores.
No, I'm talking about this resolution, Dan.
Yeah.
C4 highway commercial district, where would, where would this be allowed to be right now? According to this resolution?
Well, we could have an exhibit prepared for the hearing to show exactly where they are. But your C4 districts include Lancaster Avenue and Mr. Lewis's ward, on Township Line Road. I know there's a C4 at Meadowbrook in Dr. Hart's ward. In the second ward, at the Lanark Shopping Center is a C4 zone. And I know I'm missing one.
Quarry Center?
Pardon me?
The Quarry Center?
Quarry C5. The Quarry C5.
And what is the, what is the, what's the Manoa Shopping Center?
C5.
And if it's C4, it's also in C5?
No. If it's in C3, it's also in C4 and C5. If it's in C4, it's everything in C3 plus these additional items, and they're enumerated. So this will be one of the items that will be enumerated.
I'm sorry, Lori, say that again. C4, the C3 is more area than C4?
Almost all of your commercial zones are C3. Some of the larger land masses are C5. But your C3 has all of the basic retail uses that are permitted. So C4 and C5 just build on it. And it starts out by saying, any use that's permitted in a C3 district is also permitted in a 4, or anything in a district is also permitted.
The question is about where are the, where would fireworks be confined to if it's C4? That's the question.
The three properties that I just described.
So the, a place on Township Line?
Well, there's a district. It's not just, I know that...
And what does it run, from like the post office to...
I couldn't tell you without preparing the exhibit. This is, I'd have to have that for the hearing.
And Lancaster, we only have one block of Lancaster Avenue in all of Havreford Township. So you're talking about the area across the street?
Acme.
It's more than a block.
It's more than a block.
The Acme, the Chop, the, yeah, the Pike Shop, the Cake.
All the way from Old Lancaster Street right down to Old Buck.
The Dunkin' Donuts.
Bakery House, the Dunkin' Donuts, right.
And one place on Westchester Pike?
It's a shopping center, the Lanark Shopping Center on Westchester Pike. And I'm not, I don't know what the boundaries are of the C4 on Township Line. It's at Meadowbrook. I don't know how far it expands.
And these could not be put in the Quarry Center and could not be put in the Manoa Shopping Center?
No, they're C5.
Because they're C5?
They're C5, and typically, they're not freestanding buildings. The, under the state law, the fireworks sales would have to be in freestanding buildings. And a shopping center is generally not a freestanding building.
What about a freestanding building in that shopping center? We have freestanding buildings in the quarry, like, don't we have a Panera? Don't we have a Comcast?
Panera's not a freestanding building.
Comcast and the Franklin, crazy.
That's actually not freestanding either because there's four stores, yeah, there.
Well, what about the freestanding place in Manoa Shopping, where Mape's used to be? In the Manoa Shopping Center?
There's a bank in the harbor.
You mean, you mean where True Value was?
Yeah.
Well, True Value, it could go there if it has enough separation from the gas station or if Acme doesn't have propane tanks. Because there's a 250-foot, under the state law, there's a 250-foot separation for the sale of these from, right, other explosive or combustible materials. So if it meets that setback criterion, it could.
So is that, and this is purely from my own understanding, C5 part of the, Manoa is C5, the shopping center part of it, but the freestanding buildings behind Manoa are C4? Could be?
No.
No.
No, the whole property is Zone C5. It's a district. So the shopping center itself makes up the district. It's the shopping center district. So the Quarry Center is C5, but we're not looking at identifying the fireworks sale in a shopping center district. We're looking at them in a highway commercial district. And one of the things is, if you, maybe I can send you the act when we're getting ready for the hearing. But the act really talks about tent sales of these things. And it lists tent sales of fireworks during certain periods of time and goes on about temporary structures. So it's not something you would necessarily put in a shopping center.
I don't, I, every July 3rd, we see tents from a shopping centers up and down Route 3, up and down Route 30. You know, that it get put up temporarily for the, you know, not the explosive ones, but the...
Flowers.
You know, sparklers and...
I've never seen anything like that in Havreford. I've seen flowers, and I've seen a lot of eagles, Gare.
Now, they have one in Newtown Square Shopping Center. They put up a big tent in the center, they sell fireworks.
Yes, I've seen that. You're right, I've seen that.
I've not seen it in Havreford.
I've never seen it in Havreford.
No, I've never seen it in Havreford.
Flowers, though, and the eagle stuff.
I mean, I have, I have no problem with this resolution. This resolution says, let's have a public hearing on March 12. That's great, let's have public hearings, let's have a work session on this thing. I don't have a problem with this resolution. I'm not sure I agree with C4, but I mean, that's for, that's a conversation to have about this, so... But I, you know, to the extent that we're talking about it tonight, it's C4. I think it's worth explaining the distinctions, so I appreciate the distinctions. Lori?
I did want to point out also that we have to give 30 days in advance of the hearing the notice to the planning agencies. So we can have it on March the...
April 2nd.
12, okay. Or at the work session, which is what you normally do. That's what I thought you were doing.
April 2nd is what was proposed.
No, I said March 12th, but we could do it April 2nd. I have no problem.
Well, we can't, we don't have 30 days?
We don't have the 30 days.
Okay.
You can close the hearing. You could open the hearing, but you can't close it.
There's no reason why we can't have it. I mean, I don't mind having a special meeting if this is important. The key is notice, and the key is analysis from our solicitor, and the key is the public's opportunity. We don't have to wait to April 2 if we've got a 30-day thing. Have it the third week of March, you know?
I don't think it's that critical that we can't...
We just passed an ordinance because it was critical.
Well, to get to the first reading...
Are we going to take the position that this isn't critical?
No, this is for the zoning notice. They're two different things. The ordinance, this is a resolution to schedule a hearing. It's not the law. This is...
Well, that's the law.
This is giving public notice because we have to give the county planning commission 30 days notice as well.
But we're going to change the law. We're going to write the laws to say that this is...
Yeah, but I'm not talking about the law, I'm talking about the resolution to give the county their 30 days notice. I'd rather do it 100% in the law.
Or you're saying it's not important?
No, no.
We just went completely outside of our normal thinking.
The item that we're talking about now is what I'm referring to, not the ordinance that was just passed. The resolution. This allows us to schedule correctly so we're not challenged down the road to have our 30 days that went to the county for their portion on their zoning hearing change.
So we're not going to have a zoning hearing on this thing until April 2nd, but we passed an ordinance tonight that can't be effective until we have a, until we have a, until we actually have a public hearing. About a change in the zoning?
No. There are two separate ordinances? The ordinance that you were, that you just did a first reading of is ordinance P. 6. It amends chapter 83 because right now, your chapter 83 is absolutely inconsistent with the new law that was passed by the state in October. Our ordinance presently prohibits the discharge of even sprinkler, or sparklers. You can't even have sparklers under our current laws. So it's, it's not enforceable at all the way it is. So we were moving to try and correct that so we would have something that was enforceable because even under the state law, there are certain things you can do, but there are certain things you can't do, like the size of these things. If they have a certain amount of explosive material in them, 60 grams of pyrotechnic compositions, I don't know what that means. I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's firemen that do, and police.
But one of the issues that was raised tonight was the concern that somebody could start selling these tomorrow unless we acted tonight.
But that's the, that's the public hearing part.
That we're not going to have till April 2nd.
Right, this is about, not just the, this is not just about the use because you do have to talk about how you're going to regulate the use because you can't prohibit it. Right now, our ordinance prohibits the sale of these things, period. So you can't just prohibit it. So we're saying, well, we're going to be putting them in a district. And whether, you know, P. 6, right now, we contemplated the C4, but P. 6 may be amended to something other than the C4 district. We have to get through the zoning code to say where we're going to put it. But right now, you can't sell fireworks in Havreford Township. So we're trying to take a stab at...
Right, nobody could sell fireworks in Havreford Township. They can't sell them next week, they can't sell them the week after.
Actually, they can under the state law.
The state law, they can.
And our ordinance is completely unenforceable at this point.
Okay, but they could set, wherever they want to go, sell them, they can sell them. And we can't change that until we do a zoning hearing on that. We can't stop the sale of these in any commercial district.
We are taking a step in that direction tonight by having the first read of P. 6, which is identifying that the board at this time tonight is saying C4 is the right place. The resolution will then authorize the public hearing process to amend the zoning code to put it properly in C4 and to have the public discussion on it. But we've signified to the public our intent at this point, the board's intent, is C4. There's a pending ordinance acting that then applies under the zoning.
Which we could have, which easily just announced tonight at the board that we've got, that we've got this issue we need to address where at least till April, before we can make changes to the zoning board, but we can let the world know that this is a concern. But we don't have to pass an ordinance to do it because that ordinance didn't do what we think it was going to accomplish, which is to stop somebody from selling fireworks while we deal with all this stuff.
But you actually do because P. 6 is an amendment to your firearms, fireworks, and other weapons regulations. other weapons regulations, so it gives the police something to enforce, if somebody's discharging a display-level firework, or a firework that has too much explosive material in it-
How concerned is somebody starts selling bricks of firecrackers at, on Eagle Road? This can't stop it.
They'll have a pending ordinance, that we could say that then there's an ordinance pending, and it's not permitted in the Minowa Shopping Center, or another C3 district.
I would recommend that we have a special hearing in March to talk about this, if this is that important, and we need to move that quickly, I don't know why we'd wait till April 2nd, I understand we can't do it on the 12th, because it's not 30 days, so let's do it on the 14th, or the 20th. Let's do it at the work session. Can't have our cake and eat it, too, I mean, I don't know why we're going to do this on April 2nd. I'm fine with April 2nd.
I'm, I'm fine with the work session, but I'll defer to what the majority votes on.
I'm fine with the work session. That would be April 2nd.
April 2nd.
April 2nd is fine with me.
Would you accept-
So, we're going to change this to-
Would you accept April 2nd?
That to April 2nd.
Okay. Who was the sec-, who's second was that, was that, Mr. D'Amelio, you accept it, so-
Yes.
Both the, both the motion and the second, accept that change to April 2nd for the hearing, please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Any other new business?
Please God, no.
Nobody say a word.
Give me a second, let me think of something.
No, no, move on, Bill.
Other business, Mr. D'Amelio.
Thank you, thanks so much for the Valentine's gift and the wreath, it's beautiful, thank you, appreciate it.
Hopefully she's home in bed by now, that little girl.
Yeah, really, yeah, so it's very nice of you guys to do that, um, just want to remind everyone that Commissioner Siegel and I will be, uh, hosting a meeting in the, at the Minowa Fire Company at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, February 28th, and one of the topics that we'll be discussing is the, um, uh, the proposed, oh, actually, it sounds like it's going to go through, development at Westchester Pike and 476, which we believe is going to, uh, impact us in Haverford Township, specifically in the first and fourth wards, and possibly in your ward, as traffic, um, becomes more abundant, um, we're getting, gathering more information, so we'll be talking about it at the meeting, uh, Panoni Associates gave me some information today about, uh, about the development that I'll be looking at, so we hope to see, uh, the residents there, because this is incredibly important for us, um, it is also, uh, Black History Month, and, uh, the Eagles won the, uh, the Super Bowl, congratulations to them, but I, I realized today that Ralph Goldstone was one of the first African-Americans to play for the Eagles, uh, Mr. Goldstone played in 27 games for the Eagles from 1952 to 1955, he was a running back and defensive back, which back then, that's, a lot of players did that, because they didn't have enough players, uh, he played 10 seasons in the Canadian Football League, if they're playing for the Eagles, and helped the Hamilton Tiger Cats win the Grey Cup in 1957 and in 1963.
Bravo.
So, um, thought that was interesting.
He from Haverford?
No, I don't know where he's from, actually, but, uh, we had a, uh, the Civic Association and I met with the Trails Committee, uh, Peter Puglonezi was there, we're looking at the trail in Westgate that would connect to, uh, the Darby Creek Trail, um, we'll, we'll be discussing that as well at the February 28th meeting, we hope to, did they reach out to you, Tim, do you know, okay, so we hope to, uh, proceed in, in starting this in, uh, in the spring, and with the help of the Trails Committee and, uh, possibly the, um, friends for Haverford Trails and, and the Boy Scouts, and, and your, your team. So, we hope to do that as well, so we'll be discussing that as well, um, it's not going to be easy, it's, uh, it's kind of a steep trail, but, uh, you know, we spent probably about an hour and a half there, and we think we can do it, so, it'll be exciting to get that done, and that's it, thank you.
Mr. Oliva? Thank you, uh, Mr. President, uh, I'd like to, um, congratulate both Larry Gentili and, um, Panoni Associates, as well as, um, Peter Puglonezi and some of the other, um, people who were involved in getting the TAP grant, uh, which is, um, going to put a bridge across Minow Road and, uh, and extend the trail, the Pennsy Trail, all the way down into Vernon Road, um, that is big, it's not a, it's not a long section, we're not going to clip off a, a, um, long section there, but, um, it provides all the children who live in that section a safe way to school, uh, without having to cross Minow or Darby Roads to get to school, as well as to get to Bailey Park, um, there is no park in that section, uh, where Nailers Run, Woodland Drive, and, um, the east side of, or, I'm sorry, the west side of Darby Road, as well as Wales and Waverly, all those streets back there, there's no, they're all blocked by Westchester Pike or Minow Road, there's no safe way to get across to Bailey Park, or to any park, um, from there, so, um, this is, this is big for all the families who live there, who have children, um, who can safely get up to the Y without, without worrying about, um, that, so we're, we're very happy about that, we, again, uh, Peter Puglonezi and the Haverford Trails, uh, Rich Kerr, um, and Danny, um, his group, uh, just fantastic job on putting this all together, and, um, we really appreciate it, um, also, I want to, uh, bring up that today's Lincoln's birthday, so happy birthday, President Lincoln, I have nothing further. Mr. McCloskey?
That bridge is great, Mario.
Thank you.
Anyway, um, Commissioner Lewis, I'm sure we'll discuss updates on the College Avenue Bridge, I'll, I'll save them.
Wasn't talking about that.
No? Oh, sorry.
You went to.
Oh, no, it's okay, that's, that's, um, we, I, I will say this, Commissioner Lewis and I will, will be having a meeting sometime in, in April, probably to discuss, uh, the pending project for Ardmore Avenue Bridge, uh, that will take place after College, um, you know, we obviously want to get as much information to the public as possible, um, just quickly, on, um, the Valentines we got here from, from the green, I, from, from, uh, the, about the environmental issues, um, I am encouraged, both Doc and, and the chief gave great presentations, that the township is pushing forward, and we're continually looking for, for more, uh, for more options to reduce our carbon footprint, I think it's important, but I also, you know, what Doc, I just want to highlight again what Doc said about the, the propane, uh, trucks that we purchased, you know, gas was over $2 a gallon, even at our bulk rate, um, and propane was hovering around a dollar, so I think, um, you know, as a board, we can, we can look at, obviously, we want to reduce the carbon footprint as much as possible, but there's also opportunities, uh, to save money here, that we should be, uh, looking at, uh, and it, it'll, it'll help us in the long run, um, I also just want to mention briefly, I met with the HPD and some residents who were concerned, who expressed an interest in helping to improve our business districts along U Road, along Darby and in the Oakmont area, um, you know, it's encouraging, and anybody who wants to be involved, should be involved, um, it's, we're going through business growth i- in the third ward right now, um, and there's some growing pains that are with, go with that, uh, the township's going to work, uh, with the businesses, uh, to try to alleviate some parking concerns, um, but business growth is good for all of us, in the sense that, uh, we've discussed many times and during the budget, that there's really not a lot of room for, to just continually raise our property taxes, and the only room we have for growth as a township is in our business districts and in our business tax, um, so, we need to keep that in mind, that, and the township's desire is for all our businesses to be successful, um, you know, as things continue to grow, we're going to have some growing pains, there's going to be some speed bumps along the way, um, but the township's committed to working to meet the needs of both the residents and the businesses as that happens, um, and so I have.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel.
Uh, yeah, uh, and I want to just point out one thing that residents can do more than anything else, is to remember to recycle, um, recycling costs the township less than it costs to dump trash in the county, um, dump, and, um, to presage what'll be in the upcoming print newsletter, we anticipate a significant increase in cost for recycling, for trash dumping in the county, which means that the differential between the cost of recycling and trash will be larger, the more you recycle, the less we pay to dump, and the more money we save, that's something everyone can do, and it doesn't matter whether you live in a house, or an apartment, or a business, everyone is required to recycle, and just this past month, I was contacted by a resident of an apartment in the township that did not have recycling at the apartment, I contacted the township, uh, Ms. Cugini in the township manager's office, and we sent someone out to, uh, the apartment, and within three days, there was a recycling dumpster at the apartment, and any recycling helps us in terms of, we get credit for recycling in the township, we get funds for it, so all of those things really do matter, so please, remember and recycle, and, uh, anything that you can, it's on your, um, trash calendar, all of the different things that are recyclable, uh, please do so, um, Commissioner D'Amelio's already mentioned, um, our meeting in February, I anticipate that Commissioner McCloskey and I will have our, uh, semi-annual meeting in April, we don't have a date set up, um, and the only other thing I just want to mention is, for those who do use, um, my commissioner's website, it has been completely redone, redesigned, um, it is completely mobile-friendly, et cetera, um, I welcome comments about it, it took a lot of time to get it into this shape, um, I'm also pleased that, within the next month, it will have its 200,000th visitor, since I put it up in 19, in 2009, so it is used, um, but I welcome suggestions, and finally, and thankfully, this is what I believe to be our final meeting in this building, next month, barring anything unforeseen, the Board of Commissioners will be meeting in the Commissioners Meeting Room at the new Municipal Services Building at 1014 Darby Road across from the scadium, um, so, um, I will say-
Not yet, don't jinx us.
But it's been a long time coming, and I had hoped we would start the year in that building, uh, the township staff did, but we will be there, you know, next month, um, barring any, as I said, unforeseen circumstances, so residents, please remember the change of location, um, I can't say I'll be sorry not to be convening here, the facilities there, you know, are, are much nicer and more modern, and completely energy-efficient, and LEED certifiable, so it should be a much better experience, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
I, I didn't plan to say anything, I was going to run home and try to do something about that.
All right, move on, move on, hurry up, hurry up.
Tried to do something about that, I was going to try to do something about that $2 million credit card bill that I have, but, Dan raised a great point, and I, I do have to, I, I've got to thank everybody on the board for our new building, but Dan in particular, with his work with the Property Committee, um, uh, certainly went above and beyond, uh, the call of duty, um, in helping what ended up being our, our Township Police Station and Township Building, uh, a reality, and, and I am looking forward to the, to the new space, um, and everybody up here took, uh, took political risk when we, when we absorbed, you know, when we made the decision to improve our facilities and, um, and get what we ended up, get what we ended up getting, so, um, and, and if anyone got the wrong impression from our earlier discussions about the issues, um, everything up here, everybody feels very, very, everybody feels very committed, uh, about what they do and the positions they take, and, uh, sometimes our discussions up here seem heated, uh, and it's just a reflection of how much everybody cares about their jobs up here, it's never personal, um, except it always is, but it's, um, but, but, but we're all professionals, and we all have, we all have our motives to do what we do here, and our, every one of our goals is to make our township a better place, um, so I, I, I remind everybody of that, so that they don't get the wrong impression about how this board acts, and I just have one last comment, and it's about a very special constituent of mine, um, 12 years ago, in 2005, when I was first running for this office, my little four-year-old daughter sat in my arms at a parade, and she was completely unimpressed with the governor of Pennsylvania, and far more interested in his state police bodyguard, who she found much cuter, more interesting than, than Governor Rendell, um, and yesterday, she turned 17, so God help me as a dad, but thank you, God, for bringing her and the rest of my kids and my family into my life, so I just wanted to say happy birthday, Annie, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes, Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, I just want to thank Gene for our little Valentine packet, and more importantly, I want to thank, um, you for your leadership in HCAN and the AC, I think, um, and I think this board has worked in a bipartisan way, in acknowledging the existence of climate change, and have acted appropriately, and done what we could, and there's obviously more that we can do, and I think you saw evidence of that tonight, um, with our chief and our, and Doc, and our Director of Public Works, and their efforts in trying to convert to propane, so I think there, there's been a lot of work, good work done by this board, by this township administration, and by citizen groups, uh, as well, and, uh, there's more to do, but we're on a good path, so, thank you, Gene, for your leadership.
I also want to thank you for the packet, it's very nice, and, uh, there's only two things I wanted to say, was the, uh, the Eagles, after the Eagles, uh, won the Super Bowl, uh, it seemed like everybody wanted to come to Brookline, and the chief put out barricades, and, uh, of course, Mr. Gentili, barricades, police officers down there, and I have to say, there, there was probably a 500 to 1,000 people, and I got comments back from younger kids, who said, boy, those cops were great, they treated us great, they were really nice to us, and I don't think we had any arrests, did we, John, no problems at all, and, uh, it went from Brookline Boulevard down to the First Street, Beverly Road, and it was just mobbed in there, and it was good that all those kids and parents came down, and they could celebrate in an orderly manner like they did, and, uh, also, of course, you're always going to have a mess when you have that many people, and, uh, the next morning, you would have never known there was 1,000 people there, uh, Doc took care of things, the Boulevard was spick and span, you'd never even know there was two people there, and it was just great that, uh, the township looked as good as it looked, and I think we came out smelling like a rose on that, and, uh, Laurie did a great job the last two weeks, and, uh, keep up the good work, I know you're going to be around a long while, yeah, that's all I have.
I think she wants to stay on, that's what she really secretly wants to do.
Dr. Hart?
I also thank you for the Valentines, um, I wanted to reflect on the fact that tonight's meeting, um, falls between two national holidays, Martin Luther King and, uh, President's Day, and actually, maybe a third with the Eagles victory, maybe this will become a national holiday as well, uh, I'm certainly old enough to remember actually watching, um, the I Have a Dream speech, uh, in 1963 on a black-on-white TV, and I can attest to the fact that there have been a lot of positive changes in the country, but also, as things in the last couple of years, Charlottesville in particular, uh, indicates that we have a long way to go, um, and I'm bringing this up, actually, for a local issue, something that was really pretty disheartening, a, uh, African-American family that moved to Haver Town, to my area, Haver Town, two years ago, is considering moving, uh, because they haven't found a, a welcoming environment, they've had a, a number of, they have kids have had issues, and, uh, it has not been, um, it's, while we're trying to reverse things, it, it has not been a, a great, um, experience for them, and many of you know that my three youngest children are African-Americans, and I can't say, when they joined our family nine years ago, I can't say enough about how much Haver Town supported us, neighbors, friends, uh, Shannon Park School System, and I'm hoping that my experience is more the norm, but I, I, you know, it's a, a reason to, racism has no part in our community, and I think it, it just, we are becoming a little bit more diverse community, certainly more diverse than it was 30 years ago, when I moved here, um, and I just, you know, would call on our residents to reach out to their neighbors, especially those who have a different complexion, or speak a little differently, and, and have a welcoming environment for them, and as we're summing up to President's Day, maybe to keep in mind, uh, President Lincoln's admonition to listen to our, um, better angels, that's all I have.
Thank you, Doctor, for those words, they're very encouraging, I, I, I hope we, if there's anything we as a collective unit can do to make that situation change, I think we'd like to-
On the positive side, that, um, when other people became aware of this, there's been a number of residents who have reached out to them, so I'm hoping that we can reverse that.
Great, I think that's been my experience here as well, um, I'd like to congratulate, and dishes also said, the members of the Oakmont Minow Fire Companies, they, they- as Alston said, the members of the Oakmont Manoa Fire Companies. They, they transitioned this past month into their new fire trucks that this board so passionately passed last year. Those two, two of those three trucks that were ordered are now in service. The ladder truck at, at Oakmont and the, and a new engine at Manoa serves. So our tax dollars are serving this community. So thank you very much. At this point, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.